And thank you for joining us tonight at the Cedar Rapids Community School District's Board Meeting for Monday, June 9, 2014. I ask for someone to move the approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda Monday, June 9, 2014, Board of Education, meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Vice President Witt?
Aye. All right, on the agenda tonight, we have two public hearings. Now is the time and place to hold the public hearings and we ask each person to limit their testimony to five minutes. Our Board Secretary will let you know when your time is reached and the Board will not engage in dialogue at this time but will take your remarks into consideration when it comes to consider this item. We ask you to state your name and address for the record. So now I'd like to open up Public Hearing Number One on the overhead utility line easement. Anyone want to speak on that item? Laurel, have we received any written comments on this item?
No written comments have been received.
All right. If not, I will close the public hearing on June 9, 2014 at 5:32 PM. Number Two, we have a public hearing on school calendar, hours versus days. Laurel, have we received any comments on this item?
I've received no written comments.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? If not, I close this public hearing on June 9, 2014 at 5:33 PM. And that second public hearing relates to an item on our consent agenda number 331. Next up is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Benson?
Good evening and welcome. Tonight, we have a group of students that are high school students who have attended a program for Historically Black College and Universities Tour. The district provided 12 Cedar Rapids students scholarships. They're here to share some of their experiences with us. Paul Hayes, would you bring students forward?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce George Ramsey and the students that he brought with him tonight. He will introduce the students and they'll tell us a little bit about their experience and the benefits that they reap from being, from going on the tour.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you to talk about our experience this spring with the Historically Black College and University Tour. I brought three students with me today, one of which is a high school senior who recently graduated, who has decided to attend one of the schools that we visited this year. The other two students who are with us are students who will be seniors for the upcoming school year. And so they'll have an opportunity to be able to talk briefly about their experience and some of the things that they learned and why it's important for us to continue to offer these types of opportunities for Cedar Rapids students. Our first student is Tamia Ayokey Davis, who is a recent graduate from the school district. She will be attending the University of Missouri-Kansas City in the fall.
Hi. I'd like to say that the trip was remarkable. Without it, I probably wouldn't have gone on the trip without the scholarship. It was just great to see all the opportunities and all the diversity and so many, so much, pretty much, opportunity. I do not have the best GPA and to see how many schools would give me scholarships and onsite acceptance was great and I can say that I'm a proud Rue.
Hi, my name is Tamia and I'm a junior at Kennedy and I was fortunate enough to go on the trip this spring and I just want to thank you all for considering us and sponsoring the trip. It was a great experience. I met a lot of people. I networked a lot and I was just overwhelmed with how many opportunities there are even though I am a junior. And the trip was, it was really great. I come from a family that, with not many college graduates and to see that so many people just like me were able to go to college and be successful was a great opportunity and I thank you all and I hope you guys consider sponsoring the trip again.
Hi, my name is Kenan White. I'm a junior at Washington High School. This trip was really amazing. I got to see a lot of schools that I, a lot of which I had never even heard of and got to see how many opportunities there really are out there and I'm really glad that you guys sponsored this trip and allowed 12 students to go and experience this. There were a lot of students that got scholarships and seniors and stuff that got accepted onsite and that was really great, so, yeah.
You hear the students talk about the onsite acceptance. This year, we traveled with 77 students who were students from high schools within the Cedar Rapids community, Lynnmar community, and then the majority of our students who traveled with us this year were from Kansas City. I've been leading the tours just like this one for the last seven years. I recently moved to Cedar Rapids two years ago and after providing this type of experience for students in the Kansas City community, I felt it was really a need for us to do the same for students who are from here. Many of our students who travel on the tour each year are first-time college students in their families. And so this is a unique opportunity for students to be exposed to opportunities that they normally would not have been exposed to. For some of the students who traveled from the Cedar Rapids community, many of them shared with us that their first option was to attend the local community college and they had not thought about expanding beyond the two-year college walls. And so this was an opportunity for them to be able to travel, to visit 12 schools, mostly in the central or the Midwest southern states, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Mississippi. And so if you imagine traveling with 18 high school seniors and all of those high school seniors having an opportunity to apply it at each of the schools that we visit and then find out on the spot whether or not they've been accepted for admission and also whether or not they are going to receive scholarships. This year's tour garnered $250,000 in scholarships for all of the students who traveled with us. And we had two students who traveled this year who received full academic scholarships to each of the schools that we visited. And so while not all of the students are GPA-challenged, many of our students who traveled on the tour are students who are really excelling in their high school programs. And so this is just another opportunity for them to have an on-the-ground experience with the colleges that they're going to visit and then hopefully, for many of them, choose a school that we visit to be able to attend in the fall. And so I could go on and on and on about the tour. I'm going to stop there and in case any of you have any questions that you'd like to ask, I'm free to answer any questions at this time. Yes, ma'am?
I know the students mentioned there were a lot of opportunities. What were some of the opportunities? What really was drawing you to these schools?
Well, each year when we travel, we do a roving tour. And so the schools that we visited this year, the students won't visit the same schools next year if they travel with us. But for many of our students, we traveled to New Orleans, for example. Most of our students who traveled with us had never been to New Orleans. And so this was an opportunity, not only for them to visit Dillard University and Xavier University and Southern University in the New Orleans and Baton Rouge area, but it was also an opportunity for these students to be able to go on Bourbon Street, to experience something that they have only heard about and may never have seen had they not gone on the tour. We also spent a day in Memphis, Tennessee. We had an opportunity to visit the Lorraine Motel and spend an afternoon on Beale Street. And so these are additional opportunities that the students are being exposed to outside of the college campus tours. And so depending on where our tours are located, we seek out opportunities for the students to do sightseeing as well as attend community events within those communities that we visit.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I have something else.
I think we can't really have dialogue because it's not an agenda item.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
And thank you again for your time.
Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Good luck at UMKC.
All right, next up on the agenda, our Board Report. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Benson's husband, the report.
Yep. At this time, we want to recognize some staff members for making milestone years in their employment. Jill Savalo is going to introduce those honorees tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Actually, we did recognize employees at our last board meeting and in the excitement of my joy in announcing those employees, I did not mention some employees who have been here for 35 years who were not able to attend the meeting. So I would like to reread the names of those who have 35 years of service with the district. That would be Nancy Blocker from Jackson, David Carney from Transportation, Deanne Fratella, Transportation, Cecilia Lane, Transportation, Christine McGuire in Business Services, Randy Necker at Harding, Catherine Severson at Viola Gibson, Janet Verbick, Building Engineer at the ELSC, Denise Warnock at Coolidge, and Carol White at Washington. And I again want to thank them for their service to students and to the district.
Okay, thank you, Jill. In late May, we celebrated commencements at our four high schools. There were 1,038 students cross the stage and we also graduated students from the Home School Assistance Program and the Special Services Transition Center. So congratulations to the class of 2014. Also, late last month, we had 100 Jefferson High School students who came over to the ELSC to share ideas about the future of the city of Cedar Rapids. This activity was part of the City's Envision CR Initiative and we appreciated that and I know that the city appreciated the input. I'm also pleased to share the city of Cedar Rapids has been rated the number four position on the livability.com list of top 10 best cities for kids. The announcement reads in part that "strong schools provide children in Cedar Rapids with a quality education." That's something we can all be proud of. Something big happened. The Cedar Rapids and College Community School Districts collaborating on offering the Iowa Big Program to students beginning the 1415 school year. The Metropolitan, excuse me, the Metro Economic Alliance hosted a ribbon-cutting program and the program will be housed in the Geonetic Building. Iowa Big is an opportunity for high school students to expand their learning outside the traditional classroom and we had a very nice turnout and thank the Metro Alliance for that. We are about to wrap up our first year with our green teams in our schools. We had 23 schools this year bring together students, staff, and community members committed to making a positive environmental changes in their schools, community, and daily lives. Several business sponsors joined us and we had the opportunity during an event to announce great news that our district won the 2014 Best School Recycling Program from the Iowa Recycling Association. We look forward to having more success with our green teams and attending a presentation of that award. I am also happy to let people know that the baseball field at Kennedy High School has been officially named Herkelman Field in honor of Bill Herk, Herkelman. The June 2nd naming ceremony included an unraveling of the Herkelman Field sign as well as engraved stone wall behind the home plate. Herkelman has been a member of the Kennedy baseball staff since the high school opened in 1967. He served as head coach from '77 through '92, winning over 300 games, taking two teams to state tournament. He is a member of the Iowa High School Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. It was a nice event. In Blue Zone news, Harrison and Viola Gibson Elementary Schools have just been named Blue Zone Schools. Both schools have implemented policies and procedures that will create learning environments that support well-being of students and staff and provide tobacco-free campuses, making changes in the lunchroom, choosing healthier foods, prohibiting unhealthy food advertising on school grounds, incorporating lifestyle focus around physical education curriculum, creating a school garden, as well as a walking-to-school bus program. Congratulations to those school communities. Finally, the 1314 school year will come to an end Thursday, June 12, after several days of moving out, which will be an early dismissal day for students. And tonight, I am pleased to introduce an alumni spotlight feature. We have a rich and diverse group of alumni and I'm proud to applaud their success. So here's an alumni spotlight.
We are pleased to spotlight Cedar Rapids Community School District alum John M. Smith. A Cedar Rapids native, John serves as the Chairman of CRST International. He grew up knowing that was where he wanted to be, beginning his career in the family business in 1971.
I saw my career right here because of the business. My dad always took me out when I was even a little kid on Saturdays. So I got to know the business and really fell in love with it. So I knew what I wanted to do early in life.
Over the years, he held various roles in the organization, including his appointment as President and Chief Executive Officer in 1987 and then Chairman of the Board in 2010.
My dad always said you needed to start at the bottom. Finally got me to work at age 16 and that was the year, at least in his view, that children should have jobs. I think my first day at work, I was unloading a load of steel that had become, and I don't mean big steel, but steel sheets that we were delivering to Leffebur that became in transit, became damaged and I had to pull them off one at a time. And I'm going to tell you, after about four or five hours of that, I was ready to do something else. And I remember working with my mom on over short damaged freight, OS and D. That summer, I would have to go inspect damaged freight. So yeah, I did a wide variety of things.
John graduated from Washington High School in 1967. During his years as a Washington Warrior, he was focused on academics but always made time to indulge his lifelong passions for basketball and the arts.
Did a lot of extracurricular activities, of which the ones I spent the most time on was basketball. I mean, the kids can tell you today, it's a year-round sport. When I went to school, it was not, but still, you put a lot of time into practice, 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 and then the season's long. And then one of my loves is music and I was in the band, the marching band for football and younger days, the pit band for the basketball. So I enjoyed playing cornet and so I did music. I mean, my parents drilled into me, you're there for school. So I was there to learn and get myself prepared for college. Senior year, they called it kind of college preparatory courses in those days. Mr. Hubacek taught us world history and he just opened my eyes to what I eventually saw in college. And so he was probably the first teacher that really helped me expand my horizons in terms of learning and how fast we were going to learn in college.
John holds a bachelor's degree in economics from Cornell College and an MBA from Cornell University School of Business. He met his wife Diane when both were students at Washington High School. They are the proud parents of three children who all also graduated from Cedar Rapids Washington High School.
My kids also went to Cedar Rapids Schools and our three kids graduated from Washington. And several things I noticed. As much as I thought I worked in high school on classes, compared to my kids, I didn't. This generation is studying much harder, more, and these AP courses are incredibly difficult. I was an economics major in college. I had, I tried to help my kids with the homework and the economics. It was so mathematical, which mine was non-mathematical, I couldn't help them. And so I saw how advanced the learning was and how hard these kids did work.
John is also very involved as community leader. He serves on several boards, including the Cedar Rapids Development Corporation, Cornell College, Mercy Medical Center, and US Bank. He's also been actively involved with the Cedar Rapids Symphony, the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, and more.
Now, we seem to be, between Diane and I, I'm on the Cornell College Board of Trustees and Diane's on Mount Mercy, so education now is becoming a focus of ours.
Professionally, John has been actively involved in the transportation industry, including appointments with the American Trucking Association Incorporated, the Truckload Carriers Association, and the Iowa Motor Truck Association.
Well, coming out of high school, it's just get your core courses, take as much as, everything you can. And I'm still a very big advocate, when you're in college, of liberal arts. I mean, I tell people, if you want to come into business, great. You don't need to be a business major. In fact, is, I wouldn't even necessarily recommend it because business is changing so quickly and it's got, it's changing even more quickly than when I was in it. You really need to learn how to learn and how to keep current and how to communicate. I mean, just the basics. If you learn those things, you're going to be way ahead of your competition, which is other people, and you'll do well. And let's just talk about the business right now for a second. And the first thing outsiders look at is the school system. Is it a good school system? Can I bring my kids in here and will they do well? Answer is yes. But I'd say the school system is one of the big selling points for economic development in our town.
We congratulate District alum John Smith on his many successes and thank him for his significant contributions in support of our community.
Very good. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda, our Board Reports. Are there any Board members that would like to share? No? All right. Next, we have Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. I have two cards here filled out. This is a time where we ask people to step to the podium and address the Board for no more than five minutes and state your name and address for the record. First one I have here is Mark Robinson.
My name is Mark Robinson. I live at 307 Yellowstone Drive here in Cedar Rapids. I'm the father of four Jefferson graduates and I've also got a fifth grader at Coolidge Elementary. I'm here to talk primarily in support of the Expanded Opportunities Program. Unfortunately, my older kids didn't have that opportunity when they came through, but I've been able to spend a lot of time dialoguing, both by email and in person, with Gary Hatfield at TAFT. And I'm really encouraged about the program because I think it addresses some of the learning challenges that some of our kids need. Some of our kids need that more advanced challenge. But I also think it has a nice balance in that it opens up teacher time in the middle schools to address children that need, you know, help in those subjects, you know, when there's like smaller class sizes and stuff like that. So, you know, I just think opportunities like this are extremely important to give our administrators because they need options. Every child that comes through the schools is different and needs different challenges, needs different instruction, sometimes it even needs different methods of instruction. And I think this gives our administrators, you know, another area that they can push students towards, you know, if they think that they can handle that. And like I said, it gives other opportunities. So I really want to encourage the school board to continue to look at opportunities like this. I think it's good for our students. I'd also like to encourage the school board to continue to look at expanding the program, potentially by moving, you know, some of these high school subjects into the middle school or potentially expanding the program to seventh graders. I'd also like to encourage the school board to potentially look at expanding some language opportunities. I know we're moving in the elementary schools, moving Spanish up. Unfortunately, my fifth grade daughter missed out on all that, you know, but I'd love to see like, you know, maybe an early bird class in both middle school and high school that would allow them to take, you know, those foreign languages, which we currently don't have room in our schedule for. I'd also like to encourage, you know, more hands-on science in the middle schools and even in the elementary schools. You know, I think it's important, especially, you know, with the emphasis on technology and stuff like that, that our kids are given more hands-on opportunities. A lot of our kids, you know, just look at a book and it just glazes over their eyes. You know, you hand it, you know, and at Coolidge, my daughter had the opportunity to work on a terrarium and she was excited every day that they were, you know, watching those plants grow and learning about that sort of stuff because it was hands-on. She could do it. She could watch it, watch it happen before. So I really want to encourage that as well. So I'd also like to just, you know, thank Gary Hatfield publicly. I think he's an excellent administrator. I mean, I'm not, my kid's not even in the school and, you know, we're already having positive dialogue about, you know, some opportunities for my daughter. So just wanted to thank the school district. So once again, just wanted to really, you know, voice support for the Expanded Opportunities Program and, you know, make sure that we keep it and potentially expand it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we have Dr. Susan Larson.
Susan Larson, 5600 Bloomington Avenue, Bloomington, Minnesota. I'm the Education Services Specialist for the US Army. And I want to say something just briefly. George, as you know him, is First Sergeant Ramsey to me. And I think that First Sergeant Ramsey is typical of our soldiers. I also have Sergeant Wilder, Staff Sergeant Wilder with me and First Sergeant Brown as well. But that outreach to community and trying to find something that suits each student, embraces their particular needs and desires, is essential. And that's one of the reasons I'm speaking to you this evening. I would like to encourage you, as a board, to encourage your staff to use more widely the ASVAB Career Exploration Program. I recently was out, I go out and do the career exploration programs in, oh, sorry? May I explain?
ASVAB.
Oh, you see, I'm talking to an old army man here, so he knows what I'm talking about. The name is both descriptive and not descriptive. It's the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. But if I tell you that by itself, that sounds like, "Take this, we'll put you in boots, we'll send you out." It's not. That's like saying a car is only good to drive to the grocery store. What this is, is a comprehensive career exploration review based on a snapshot of what students know and then taking an interest inventory and then going to the Department of Labor's ONET site and putting all of those pieces together. There isn't a student who isn't well-served by this no-cost program, not one. In fact, I had, I went out to a rural school recently to do the interpretation and I had three young men who scored almost perfect scores in the mechanical comprehension. By the way, we're the only battery that looks at, gives you an assessment for kinetic learning, for abstract thinking in three dimensions. These young, two of the young men had a 99, one had a 98. Two of them were at risk of dropping out of school. They were brilliant. I don't run into, and we give this battery to a half million students a year. So when I tell you in the 99th percentile, that's against a lot of other folks. And these kids were at risk of dropping out because nobody ever said to them, "Hey, you are brilliant. There is an area where you shine like nobody else and there are wonderful jobs in this, whether that's in engineering, whether that's in refined manufacturing, whether that's in invention." There had been no place that anybody had ever said to them, "Hey, there's some opportunities in all sorts of areas, not just the military, by the way." But I would really encourage you to use this as a compliment to the "I have a plan" because junior year, career planning consists of taking the ACT, which is wonderful. Every student should. And in fact, performance on the ASVAB is highly predictive of how you'll do on the ACT. But what we do is then we go out and look at what students are interested in and we look at the career projections. We say, "Are there going to be jobs in your area? How long do you want to go to school? What can you reasonably expect to earn your first three years? And how much debt should you be comfortable taking out to balance those interests and those opportunities?" We talk about all of those things. I think the more places that students have opportunities to hear about how they can realistically succeed and create a plan so that they don't become dropouts with $16,000 in student debt and very little way to pay it back, is, I think that's just a smart educational, it's a smart business decision and I urge you to really look at it. It is a plan for all students. Further, I would like to ask that you consider, or your schools consider, the release of those scores at the least for those young people who've said, "I would like to explore the military as a career." Military career readiness is a big issue right now and we have lots of young people saying, "You know, I'd like to have some information." And when that score is released, it goes to all branches. They can compare. To not do that, to not release the scores of those young people who've said, "I want to learn more about it," is, in my mind, the equivalent of a young person saying, "You know, I'd like to be an engineer." And somebody saying, "Well, that's great, but I'm just going to give you information about liberal arts schools." You need to, if there's, if there's an interest, we'd like to make sure that they're fully prepared and aware and able to explore in a very, in a serious manner. So that would be one of the requests that I would have.
Excuse me, Dr. Larson, your time is up, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board at this time? All right, our next- Our next item is Consent Agenda. The minutes and the Consent Agenda items were circulated to the board in the packet and asked if there are any items that require clarification or would like to be pulled at this time. Yes, Gary?
I have some questions on BA 14331.
331.
Hours versus days.
Any other items that we'd like to discuss at this time from the Consent Agenda? Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on this. One, right now, we currently are, our early release days are counted as a full day, even though they're, the students are not there for a full day. So how would that affect, would we be losing days next year because we wouldn't have, we would only be counting the hours that they're there? Would that cause us to have to add more days? That would be the first question.
Your observation is correct. Under an hours format, we only can count the hours that students are in instructional activities on that day. We believe we have sufficient hours planned for that will accommodate those early releases and still meet the 1,080-hour requirement.
So, the way, what I'm hearing is that we may have actually more, if we were to just use our present schedule, we'd actually have more hours in our built-in schedule than we would need just because of the way we calculate and then the amount of minutes that students are in our schools now.
That's correct.
Okay. The second is that how would this be, I know one of the, one of the reasons put forth for going hours to days is, is maybe not having to have add extra days at the end, which we've experienced this year quite dramatically. How would we recoup? How could we do that? What would be the methodology about going?
Excellent question. The hours for this year were extended the school day year four days to make up for four inclement weather days, and we used the two inclement weather days that were already incorporated within the calendar. Next year, should we have the similar circumstance, we could, after spring break, add 15 minutes to the beginning of the day, 15 minutes to the end of the day, and within the period of time between the end of spring break and the end of the regularly scheduled end of the school year, we would be able to make up about four days on hours. And remember that we're over to begin with, so we think hours gives us a great, a degree of flexibility to say that next year we should not, you know, barring two blizzards and we lose 20 days, but we should not have an extended school year beyond the published calendar next year. We should have the flexibility to make up that time.
As we were looking at possible ways, I know this year of trying to recoup, and I know we were told from the board, State Board of Education, that adding minutes was not, because we were calculating days, was not. So this will give us that built-in flexibility then to...
That's correct on both points. We did ask the Director of the Department and were indicated that that was not within his scope of authority because we were on days. And yes, the change from hours to days gives us that flexibility.
No further questions.
Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else that had any issues on the agenda? If not, I will ask if there is a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we will have a roll call due to the personnel items on the agenda.
Thank you. Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Vice President Witt?
Aye.
Very good. Next, we have a presentation from afar on learner-centered assessment and reporting practices. Trace Pickering is going to present this for a 10 or 15-minute presentation, and we're going to ask the board, if you have any questions after the presentation, we're going to record those questions and then we'll do a follow-up.
Yeah. The board has asked for some clarifications around the assessment and reporting practices. Dr. Pickering could not be here, so he recorded some information. He will respond to questions as Director Witt indicated, and he has recorded this because we wanted to get this out because it's a current topic in the community.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to visit with you tonight about progress on learner-centered assessment and reporting practices. First of all, the question, what is it? It's more commonly known, and you've probably heard it referred to, as standards-based grading or effective grading practices. We're really trying to stay away from the word standards-based grading because it's really a misnomer. This initiative is really much more about thinking about instruction and assessment in a holistic way. It's not just simply coming up with a grade at the end. So we're going with learner-centered assessment and reporting that really is about determining student learning and achievement based on clear standards and outcomes. So you might ask, we've been doing grading for decades. Why bother changing? It still works, right? Traditional grading, interestingly enough, has a history and some research behind it that is fascinating. So here's a brief history lesson on grading and reporting. Prior to 1900, teachers described student learning to parents narratively. One-room schoolhouses, home visits, teachers and parents were easily able to sit down and just narratively talk about where their child was progressing and how they were moving forward. Traditional grading practices, the ones that we commonly know today and most of us were under in our schooling career, were designed in the early 1900s in response to compulsory attendance laws. Compulsory attendance laws really ballooned the numbers in our schools in a rapid way. This was also the time that schools, especially middle schools and high schools, were dealing with this massive influx of kids into the school by separating out subjects and discipline areas and courses and classes. And so we see teachers at this time moving to the practice of assigning points and percentages just to be efficient and manage this number of kids. This practice went largely unquestioned and rapidly was accepted across the country as a way of determining student learning and student success. In 1912, 102 years ago, the first study of grading practice was done. It found a dramatic lack of reliability of grading based upon points and percentages. No real surprise, every teacher looked at things differently, valued different parts, signed different point values, and it created lots of lack of reliability, which honestly carries through much of today. By the early and mid-20th century, we began to see this belief that their intelligence was innate and fixed, and all the school had to do was, the schooling would then uncover where a student fell on the bell curve. And so innate intelligence equaled student achievement in the minds of the public and education. This allowed what's known as the curve to become popular because it would assume all kids fell along the bell curve, you applied some mathematical formulas, and you could determine who was getting As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and the like. Grading on the curve, points, percentages, all relieved teachers of the very difficult task of identifying and assessing specific learning criteria. Again, not because they were lazy, didn't want to, it's just lots of factors just made that easier to do, to move to points and percentages. Most changes that we've seen in the past several decades related to grading are really just tweaked variations of what was created 115 years ago. Things like adding a plus and a minus to the grades to give you a little more distinction, including extra credit, weighting grades in GPAs, including behavior effort and work ethic to those grades, and converting letters to names like exceeds, meets, et cetera. Finally, grading practices that ultimately convert a lot of nuanced information about a human being and their learning into a single score is problematic because it adds to reliability and validity issues. It's like any of us, how can you reduce any of us down to a single number or a score? This also includes standards-based grading practices. Anything that ends up ultimately reducing it down to one number is problematic. But what does the research say about grading practices? Well, grading and reporting has been found to not be an essential element to the instructional practice. Not necessarily saying reporting and that to parents, but not essential to the instructional side of things. It serves a variety of purposes, but no one method serves purpose as well. So needs of teachers, students, and parents and the community are all different. No one reporting method satisfies all of them well. Grading and reporting requires inherently subjective judgment. It should always be done in reference to learning criteria, never on the curve. And grades have proven to have some value for as rewards, but no value as a punishment. And finally, many traditional grading practices actually depress achievement and may lead to school failure and dropout. Students continually get lower grades and they become less motivated, less interested, and it just, it's a downward spiral for their achievement. So what's next for the Cedar Rapids Community School District? As we make the transition to an academic and performance standard type of system and away from seat time, task-focused, credit-based systems, we have to create a reporting and grading system, assessment system, that's aligned to this new way, this new way of thinking about student learning and performance. And we are in the midst of this transition right now. But we're talking about much more than just a technical change and just asking teachers and schools and parents to move from one thing to another. This is very much a philosophical, higher-order kind of change. And so I want to quickly give you the from-to that we are facing today. We are moving from a fixed mindset, this idea that we all have a set intelligence level and school just unfolds what that is, to a growth mindset in which brain research and that indicates that we actually learn throughout our life and we can build neural, new neural networks throughout our life and so forth. That grades equal students' worth and they're, in their very final, put in pen, to grades being more of a guide to what needs to happen next for students. From assessment is for the teacher and for parents and the community, to assessment is really for the learner to know where to go next. From learning to, from learning seen as assignment completion, compliance, recalling information, to learning as the ability to expand your options, your own options, by showing what it is you can do with what you know. Moving from an externally-driven motivation, grades, points, awards, credits, to an internally-driven motivation, motivation based on a person's passions and interests and their ability to see where they're going, where they're at, and how they can get there. And finally, from decontextualized knowledge, learning things in isolation without context, to highly contextualized knowledge. Can I take what I'm, what I know or what I need to know and apply it to a real problem or issue? So what does our implementation look like? We have had teachers piloting this for some time, and from their efforts and the efforts of others that we've been learning from, we're able to provide this year more guidance to continue to move forward. First, we are strongly encouraging our middle school staff this fall to begin implementing and practicing learner-centered assessment and reporting. Our goal is full implementation in the 1516 school year. So next year again is another year of piloting, a little more purposeful, encouraging more teachers to do the, to research it, study it, to begin to dabble in it in their classrooms so they get comfortable with it. High school staff are encouraged to begin the process of researching, practicing, or in many of their cases, continuing implementing, looking for wider implementation in 1516 and full in 1617. Some of the issues we face and why it's so important for us to move strategically and not just make a mandate and cause it to happen quickly, like any transition, moving away from something that virtually every one of us understands or assumes to understand about grading and point accumulation, this is going to take some patience and perseverance on our part. But the encouraging news is we've been learning a ton over the past few years about this practice and how it can look for us. We've learned that parents have to be communicated with early and often, and they need to clearly understand how this approach works, how it affects their children, and ultimately is better for their children in terms of they and their child knowing exactly what they know and where they're headed. Getting an A is pretty simple in our current format. People know what it takes to get an A. I finish all my homework, I score well on my tests, I turn in, I show up, those kind of things. The path to an A now looks a little different, and it's not quite as clear, and so we need to continue to make that as explicit to parents as possible. Again, as I mentioned, teachers can't really be mandated to do this as it represents an approach to teaching and learning and not simply a technical shift. And many in our community, parents, kids, teachers, the community at large, are really unaware of the implicit assumptions that our culture holds about grading and homework. And that makes the tradition, the transition difficult as well. A couple of quick examples would be, would be that grades, that grades are valid across classrooms and consistent, and that a grade in one class is equal to the learning in a grade of another, and that kids won't do homework without the reward and punishment of points associated with it. And so those are just two examples of some assumptions we deal with. We've learned that midterm grading can be problematic because it's just difficult to decide how much has a student learned of the standards, how far along should they be in that attainment of standards. It's a little difficult, a little more difficult process than simply adding up the points that they've accumulated to date. So we're working on helping, helping people understand what that looks like. The role of homework and zeros has to be universally applied. Our priority standards, we have to continue to identify those and make those manageable for our teachers. We must have support for technical solutions so the reporting and documentation can be as easy and seamless as possible for the staff. Those are some of the key implementation and transition issues we are planning and preparing for. The kind of support we can offer this year. We have a group of 60 or so teachers who voluntarily meet periodically to discuss what they're doing, what's working, what isn't, and they are really helping us build the guidebook and the guide, the path towards this learner-centered assessment approach. Our curriculum support team with Carla's leadership is helping us to integrate learner-centered assessment practices as they deal with the priority standards and determining the competency, proficiency levels and that. Power School has added a dimension to its capacity that's going to make this much easier for parents and teachers and students to understand. Again, I mentioned we are compiling a grade, a guidebook of practices. The ones that, things that we can standardize, we're going to be clear about that. The areas that we are still under debate and testing, we will allow teachers to continue to test and pilot in ways that help inform us as to the best ways to move forward. And finally, providing guidance and helping to track buildings and staff that are moving in this direction so we can provide just-in-time, ongoing, consistent support and learning for them. We have standardized on a few things. The first is our scale. We will utilize a four-point scale with a zero. A three means that the student meets the standard. They've, they've taken the priority standards and they've demonstrated that they are competent in those standards. A four is exceed standards. In the traditional way, that would be an A, meaning they have gone above and beyond the standards for that grade level or course and are into the next level up. In this case, a zero is not like an F or a traditional zero. Zero simply means there's no evidence, teacher's seeing no evidence to make a judgment. So for a simple example... So, for a simple example, if there were standards for my parenting ability with my teenage daughter, if you never saw me with my teenage daughter, you would have no evidence, and so, my score on the scale would be zero. Not that I can't do it, just that you don't know if I can or I can't. We will be clarifying the role of zeros in homework. There really isn't a role for zeros in the traditional sense. The practice of homework is important. It's still an essential element of learning. It's just going to take some time for parents and students to understand the new role that homework has. In fact, homework can be evidence of a standard attainment. In some cases, it's just not tests and assessments. We're going to clarify how students can earn the exceeds and therefore an A. It shouldn't be an incredibly difficult proposition. It should, should still be attainable by students who are putting forth the effort in learning the material, and so, we'll be working to make sure that is possible and works well. And then again, guidance on the midterm to, to make sure that parents and students know where they stand midterm in terms of obtaining the standards and so forth. That's a quick overview of the, where we're at with learner, learner-centered assessments and reporting, and I would be open to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Here, and so, he could answer your questions directly rather than write them down and go back and forth and spend lots of time. So, Justin's got it all set up. Dr. Pickering, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Just need to be up a little louder, but we've got several questions. Keith, did you want to lead it off or?
Well, I was writing one down.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was working my way down. Anyone got a question?
Under the current system, if a student gets a C, talking to Michael, is the?
He's on the telephone.
Sorry. Under the current system, if a student gets a C, and you get an A at, on the final, in a lot of classes, that's a B. And yet, you've demonstrated you know the material, so would you get the exceed standards under this system that you've learned the material? You can do it.
Did you get that, Dr. Pickering?
I think so. The question was right now, if you ace the final, sometimes you can get an A. Under this system, you exceed, demonstrate that you can exceed the standards, you get an A.
A or whatever number you want to put on it or whatever.
Right, yep, exactly.
Tell you what.
Yes, yeah, it's.
Cause you've demonstrated.
All based on demonstrating, demonstrating your ability to understand and know the standards and be able to demonstrate to the teacher that you, you can do them.
Very good. Thank you. Nancy?
So, are we switching, have you switched to this now and is it being used in some of the schools?
Question.
It has been piloted in several schools and several teachers have begun, begun the process in more of the standards-based grading approach. So, I'd say, I couldn't give you a number, but there's a fair number of middle school and high school teachers working on it right now.
Yeah, it's not one school building yet. We're just using it in multiple buildings, multiple, is that right? Mary Ellen?
Yep, because at the end of the day, the grading scales and that are all still the same for them, so.
Okay. Yeah, Dr. Pickering, we gotta get a microphone here. So, the question we had was, is the standards-based grading, although we're not calling it that, right? What are we calling it?
I'm sorry.
Learner-centered assessment. I'm sorry. But is it being used in any of the school buildings? Mary Ellen?
I just wanted to clarify that we have been using learner-centered scoring and grading at the elementary level for the past six years. And what we've done, we've identified the standards or the student learning expectation for each grade level and each content area. So, that was done six years ago. And we also use a four-point scale. It is a one, which is limited progress, a two nearing goal, three is proficiency, and then three plus is, has exceeded proficiency. So, that has been used for six years now at the elementary level, and that was why we thought with the progression as we looked to move up with that, there's been the greatest amount of work done at the middle school level.
Very good.
To also answer that, there, as far as what's happening at middle school and high school with those 60 people, it's a combination of middle school and high school teachers that have been using that. They're kind of piloting it. They're trying to, you know, refine their practice and what it's going to look like. Some of them are reporting it to parents. Some of them are kind of keeping that scale to themselves right now and still using the traditional grading model, but it's really that learning process. So, we do have some at both levels that are kind of piloting and trying it out.
Very good. Others?
Well, this decrease the variability in grading from one teacher to another that's teaching the same subject.
Dr. Pickering, we'll start with you.
That's a great question. That would be the ultimate, the ultimate intent is if you can create standards and then as curriculum folks develop those progressions or, I'm sorry, call it, I think of what we call it right now.
Proficiency scales.
Proficiency scales, that we would begin to see a much, much tighter standardization and much better validity and reliability because teachers are able to evaluate students based on clear targets and examples of those targets and so forth. So, that would be our, our intention.
Anything to add? Gary?
Dr. Pickering, would it be at least theoretically possible to have a high school student, for instance, assess out of a class?
It's certainly a possibility because if the student can demonstrate that proficiency level at that grade level, then there's really no reason to have them sit through a class they already know. Now, I would anticipate if our curriculum is rigorous as it should be, we would see very few students being able to do that. You might see some students move quicker. They might finish in half or three-quarters of the time that others would, and others may need a little bit more time. But I would not anticipate a deluge of kids being able to basically, what's the college term, clef out of, out of classes, but it would happen, I'm sure.
Well, what, what would happen with a student that advances beyond, you know, is ahead, finishes the assessment before the end of the semester, we're moving to semesters?
Right. Well, my, my assumption, and Mary Ellen and Val can step in here, I would, I would expect there to be enrichment beginning to happen, beginning to work towards the next level of coursework, those kinds of things, as long as, you know, as long as we're in a, a system in which there are classes and 180-day schedules and that, we would have to manage that. But that's, I, they wouldn't just, I'm guessing they wouldn't just stop and get a, you know, get a vacation time, that we would want them to continue moving forward with the standards and deepening, deepening their experiences and opportunities.
They could take a class in the big program.
There you go.
Very good. John, do you have some?
I, I do. You know, my own children went through the transition in the elementary program here years ago when we switched to standards-based, and it was key to have those meetings with the parents at each school and clear communications, and that's the only feedback that I've had so far is that parents have been a little unsure about what all this means. So, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, that that's all part of this. I would just say, one question, standards, I assume, are tied to the core curriculum that we're moving to and most of the country is moving to, so you're shaking your head on that. In addition, I would just ask for, you know, since I do work on the college and university side, is some colleges and universities may not be sure what this all means. We're kind of on the leading edge here, a new practice, and all the data that they're using right now is based on the traditional grading system for the most part. It's, it's a key factor used in most college admissions as standard exams like ACT, SAT and things are actually not weighed that heavily by most admissions decisions. And I know that parents are concerned about this change and how it will affect scholarships and admissions decisions. So, conversations with those colleges and universities ahead of time, and then being able to translate that back to the parents, I think, will be of huge help, so.
Dr. Pickering, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, we, well, one thing we're talking very seriously about during this, to stress your first part is yes, getting, getting some of these things standardized that I mentioned in the PowerPoint so that we can be really clear with parents. And we've had many teachers working on that and having lots of success in how to effectively communicate this with parents and help them along. That's one. And two, we have no intention of harming any of our children in terms of their college entrance and that, so we will continue to translate those back into traditional grades that colleges would recognize. And, you know, we will continue to fully expect them to do well on their standardized tests and their ACT and all those kinds of things. And then slowly begin to share with the colleges that the evidence we have above and beyond kids just accumulating points, but the evidence we have is what they can do with, with their knowledge and with the standards and that they've, they've mastered those standards instead of just accumulated those points.
I was just going to clarify the standards that they are referring to, John. It is the Iowa Core Standards in the case where that's available, and in areas where they're not, teachers are using national standards.
Great. Thank you. Any others? Ann?
Yeah, there's some district policies regarding if a high school students are failing a class, their participation in extracurricular and co-curricular activities is reduced or temporarily suspended. So, I guess, and that, there may be other policies that the district has related to that. So, that's just whether that's part of the conversation yet or not, it's just something that will need to be. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, absolutely. It will take a policy review, but I think to John's point, this has to be unfolded carefully so that parents and students both understand the implications. And a lot of people want to sometimes think this is an either-or situation, but this can be a both situation for, for a, a time until such time that universities are prepared to make that transition. So, I don't want the board to think that we're going to disadvantage our students because that's the furthest thing from our mind. We're really trying to refocus our students around their responsibility to learn material rather than earn an artificial score.
Great. Thank you. Ann?
Another question. Would this mean that students could be doing homework more than once or taking exams more than once so that they can actually demonstrate that they've learned? Is that the idea?
Yes, there'd be multiple, multiple opportunities, multiple ways for students to demonstrate their understanding. It could be traditional tests and quizzes. It could be, you know, doing some homework and projects and being able to demonstrate that they can do things. One of the things moving forward, we'll continue to have conversations about is how many times a student needs to demonstrate a particular skill or standard for us to validate that they have it. That's a down-the-road conversation, but that's also on our mind.
Very good. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pickering, we're going to move on to the next item?
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
No problem.
All right. Next item on the agenda is administration. And so, we have item here, the first item is on the authorizing the sale and issuance of $9 million in school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds. Steve Graham?
Very lengthy resolution within the board packet. It's required by the district to have this resolution approved. It's been prepared by a legal counsel, Dorsey Whitney, actually were referred to by our current counsel, Lynch Dallas. So, they did the bond counsel on this, and we need to approve it in order for us to accept the low bid in the next board item.
Thank you. Before we get into that, let's, let's go ahead and go through the Roberts Rule. Is there a, someone who would like to move the resolution authorizing the sale?
I'll move the resolution as written that we approve the sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion on this item? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Keith?
I'd just comment that the interest rate that we're paying on this, that if we allowed the money to accumulate to do these projects, because I was questioned about that, that earlier this month, that the cost of construction is a much faster rate than what we're, we would pay for interest. So, this allows us to take advantage of lower cost of construction and ultimately get more done. And that's a question, Steve?
You hit it right on the mark, Director Westercamp. The rate of inflation in constructions as far exceeds 1.48%. So, then that's the rate of interest on our debt. So, it's a, it's a good move.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
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 Aye. The second item we have is the, kind of ties into that. This is the resolution to approve the sale of the $9 million sales tax revenue bonds, and you provided us a document here?
Yes, we had 12 entities who bid on this. The exhibit I provided to you, the highlighted one, the winning bidder, is Regent's Bank at a 1.48% rate of interest. This is a four-year debt, and as we had mentioned to you at our last board meeting, that we were looking at approximately a $9 million debt. $6 million is the predicted deficit over the next 18 months, $3 million for contingency. And Piper Jaffray is not charging their fee for the $3 million contingency component of our debt. So, they are giving us a break on, on that part. And so, I would just ask the board to consider awarding to the low bidder, Regent's Bank.
Is there someone who would like to move this item?
I move that we approve the sale of $9 million sales tax revenue bonds as written.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, now, the next item on the agenda, Steve, don't run away. It says here, resolution of the election of Pepel. Do you want to share anything with us on that or?
We have presented and discussed this at previous board meetings. This is the resolution that we have to file with the county election official to have a election next September 9th. Yeah, that's right. So, we recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay. Is there someone who would like to move it? John?
I move that we approve the resolution for the election of Pepel on September 9th, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Keith?
The concern that I've had raised is the dollar 34. And my response, every time asked me that question to me is, is we should have been at this level for a longer time period. This is crucial. It's the form of financing that the state allows us in order to maintain and improve our buildings. And, and it's something that we should have done prior to where we're at today, and that's why we have some of the problems we have today. This will not totally solve our problem, but if we don't do it, the problem will become gigantic. And that's the decision that we have to make.
Thank you. Ann?
I just had a comment as well. It's my understanding that there will not be any tax increases, at least for the next year, based on some planning that the district has done. So, so even though the levy is going up, the property tax rate, at least in the near term, will not be changing, and so, I think that's.
Right. In the first fiscal year, we believe we can accommodate this increase within the current rate.
Very good. Anyone else? If not, roll call, please.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Vice President Witt?
Aye. And our last item here, under administration, is the overhead utility line easement. Is there someone who would like to move that? It was on our public hearing tonight. Would someone like to move the resolution? John?
I move that we approve the resolution for permanent overhead utility line easement at Garfield Elementary as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
Vice President Witt?
Keith and I get confused a lot. We look a lot alike.
I'm sorry.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item is under human resources. Jill Sorrello will provide us an update of where we stand with our contracts. Jill?
Yes, thank you, Director Witt. I have provided in the packet two, several items for human resources, the first being the terms and conditions of employment for administrators and non-administrative meet-and-confer group, along with the issuance of those contracts and assignment letters. And I do want to appreciate, or I do want to say that I appreciate all of the work that has gone into these meet-and-confer agreements, and I asked the board to approve them.
Hey, thank you very much. Now, these four items are related to human resources, so if no one object, we could combine those four into one motion and second it and go on, or we can do them individually and do four votes. It's up to the board.
I'm fine with combining the four.
Yeah, I think we should combine the four.
The four?
I move that we combine the four human resource resolutions.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion?
They are identical, right? I haven't read them.
They haven't changed from the last time we've seen them?
They haven't changed.
No, but I mean the resolutions themselves between the four are all identical, the way they're stated.
Sorry, are we voting to do them all together and then we're going to actually vote on the items themselves? Okay.
Could be a voice vote.
Yeah. Is there, can we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries? Okay.
Go to the second one.
Okay. So the last one is the terms and conditions for bargain groups, bus drivers, food service, teacher associates, secretaries, and custodians. And again, I would like to thank our union representatives. We had a great year for bargaining this year, and I appreciate their hard work.
Is there a motion to approve that item? Keith?
Someone.
I know, I'm a little confused too.
Yeah, we need one. You've rolled all the resolutions and the last item into one.
Including that one she just talked about.
Motion. So you need one roll call for all four items.
Okay. We just made a motion to combine them. I'm sorry. That's where I lost track. Yes. And is, okay, roll call, please.
Do you want to give an explanation on the other ones?
No, I just did. Okay.
So do we need to actually say these resolutions, or we're just moving that all these resolutions are?
As presented.
So I move that all the resolutions are approved as presented in the board book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Or roll call, I'm sorry.
Did you have questions, Keith?
No, I was just saying, roll call.
Move too fast here.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Vice President Witt?
All right, aye. Thank you very much, guys. Okay, the next item on our agenda is retiree recognition. The Board of Education will recognize district employees who are retiring in 2014 via video presentation.
Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I am pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service.
We're pleased to congratulate Kathy Shelton on her 27-year career with the Cedar Rapids Schools. Kathy is currently a fifth-grade teacher at Van Buren. She also taught at Monroe and Garfield.
Being a part of the Van Buren family, I think. I've really enjoyed being a part of it with all the staff and the family and the students have been just wonderful. When a student finally gets it and they just, they come back and tell you, hey, I thank you for helping me learn that. Not getting up every morning early, not worrying about snow days, and working in my garden whenever I want.
Congratulations to Mr. E. Ozzy Eggleton, physical education and coach at Harding Middle School. Ozzy has 42 years of service in the district, all of them at Harding.
I'll miss the students, the staff, the interaction and stuff with the parents and the community. I think a lot of good things has happened since I've been here, and I think they will continue to happen once I leave. Well, I've been using this phrase and statement, after being here for 42 years, I'm going to do nothing for a while. That means I visit my family, which most of them live down south, out east, my grandkids, and let them get a chance, which I've been away for a while, get a chance to know me and up close and be with me.
The district is pleased to congratulate Gordy Nordgren on his career as a United States history, psychology, and social psychology teacher at Jefferson High School. He also served as head baseball coach, assistant baseball coach, and an assistant freshman boys' basketball coach. The district thanks him for his 13 years of service.
Daily interactions with students and teachers. The best part about my job is Monday through Friday, I get to basically set my schedule and curriculum and basically deal with the units I want to deal with. New challenges, new adventures, fishing. Still going to be working, so it's not true retirement. I'll still be working.
Congratulations to Cynthia Berger, currently sixth-grade language arts teacher at McKinley Middle School, for her 24 years of service to the district.
Oh, my goodness. I've really enjoyed my career. I've loved my job. And I think what I'll probably miss most will be the coworkers at McKinley. They are an absolutely extraordinary group of educators who love the kids, love to have fun. And I will miss seeing them every day and working with them. The best part of being a sixth-grade teacher is when I actually start to see the students are enjoying learning and they're showing progress. They'll come to me excited about something, reading, something they've written they want to share with me. That's the best part. I love that part. My husband, John, and I are going to travel a lot. We're leaving for Ireland the end of August. Then I have six grandchildren I plan to spend lots and lots of time with. And I'm very blessed because I have both of my parents living. They're in their late 80s, and I plan to spend a lot of time with them.
The district is pleased to congratulate Marie Kelch, special education teacher at Taft Middle School, on her 15-year career.
I will miss creating curriculum, the lessons, the technology, the activities, for all the specially-designed instruction for my students on my roster. Best thing that I've liked is the co-teaching. I have been able to teach with some really excellent general ed teachers in science and social studies and especially language arts. Being a part of the exceptionally talented special education staff that have taught here at Taft as well as are still teaching here has just been absolutely awesome. I am looking forward to not having a planned day every day and being able to have time to spend with my family, of course. I plan to, I'm going to drive my dad's antique cars. He's got three Model Ts and a Chandler that's 100 years old. I'm also going to drive my own 1969 Roadrunner convertible a lot more. So it's going to be fun.
That's very good. All right, so please take your calendar with you and fill out the meeting evaluation. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
If not, roll call, please.[1784.63]